All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order our school committee meeting. It is January 20th, 2015. It is 7:00 PM. As a reminder, this meeting is being both audio and video recorded. And I just ask if anyone is doing the same, just to raise their hand and let us know. Perfect. And now, if we can all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have roll call. We'll start to my left. Elizabeth Marcy-Boucher.
Gregory Thompson.
Mitch Fuchero.
Deirdre Mayeux.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Bill Fonseca.
Teri O'Leary, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Kathy Salaby, Recording Secretary.
Perfect. And our student rep, Jack Morahan, may or may not be showing up this evening, so I just want to make note of that, that we're not ignoring.
Ms. Chairperson, I ask that we move 5.1, Maple Shade's new presentation of letter on school lunch choices, to be heard at this moment.
Okay, motion's been made.
I'll second.
And second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay, that carries forward, 5-0. So, at this time, Mrs. Bedard, this is your opportunity to come up. You can bring someone with you. Come sit in the big chair.
So, this evening, we have Emma Bedard, a student at Maple Shade School, and we have Mr. Axelrod, one of the teachers at Maple Shade School. And we also have friends and family in the audience, as well as Mr. Prudet in the audience. And Mrs. Paul is here, Director of Food Services.
And before Emma reads, I just wanted to kind of lay the groundwork for you folks a little bit. I work with Emma as a tutor after school, and we've worked on every subject, but one of the areas we've worked on is writing. So, as a language arts teacher, I like to kind of head in the direction of persuasive writing, because it gives students a chance to have a voice, but also perhaps make a difference and do something that is real for them. So, she chooses her topic, school lunches, very much a part of her life, and she worked extremely hard to draft, revise, edit, go through the entire process with my guidance, but mostly her own. So, what you're hearing are her thoughts, her ideas, and her opinions that she would like to share with you.
Great, thank you.
Dear school committee members, my name is Emma Bedard, and I am a fifth grader at Maple Shade Elementary School. I would like to thank you in advance for allowing me the opportunity to read this letter at this public meeting. I am writing to you to suggest that more lunch choices be offered to the students at Maple Shade School. I am hoping that after you've read and considered all of my reasons, you will agree with me. There are several reasons why I believe that this is something worth fighting for. First of all, with more lunch choices, the school is likely to sell many more lunches, which will bring in more money for the district. Secondly, I am sure that most people would agree that the school system needs to offer both more and healthier lunch choices to all students. My next reason is that by offering more lunch choices, it's likely that more students will actually eat their lunches instead of wasting all that food that simply goes into the trash. Another important factor to consider is what the research shows us about students and their eating. For example, we know that when students are eating well, they would make much better progress in school. In addition, I believe that by providing more lunch choices, students will enjoy their lunch instead of simply tolerating it, as many do now. Lastly, by offering more nutritious and delicious lunch choices, we could eliminate a great deal of waste by removing the least popular meals from the menu altogether. Now that you've read my many reasons in support of a greater variety of lunch choices, I hope you will join me in my quest on behalf of the children at Maple Shade School. Again, let me thank you for taking the time to read and consider this letter. Happy New Year to everyone. Sincerely, Emma Bedard.
And Emma, how? Great job.
I've seen you taking focus notes there.
You've got six reasons, which are very impressive. More lunch choices, would you just limit it to Maple Shade, or would you do it K through 12, from Meadowbrook all the way through the high school?
What do you think?
Yeah.
K through 12? Yeah, I think she's focused on Maple Shade because that's her world.
Right.
But I think if it were to go somewhere and become a discussion, she would probably see it going district-wide, if possible. But I think she started with her world, because that's where she lives.
Emma, my girls are at Mountain View, and they, every time a lunch brunch comes around, they get lunch brunch. And occasionally, they'll get pizza. Are there other choices that are existing that you'd like to get now?
No.
Do you like those two, though, at least?
Not really. Not really.
So, what suggestions, then, would you give in terms of other choices that you may be interested in?
Maybe like chicken soup, or like, mandar and oranges.
Chicken soup during the cold and flu season? See that?
So, you don't have a favorite at all, now?
No.
Do you feel that at one time, you did like some of the school lunches, and they may have changed a little?
Yeah.
Yeah, what was something that you liked in the past?
The bagel.
Well, the bagel was offered every day, was that the alternate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It used to be like, like, not, like, like, now it's in, like, a bag, and it's a really small bagel. It's small.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember when my daughter was at Maple Shade, she used to really like the lunch brunch. But she always said to me about the food, and things have changed, because my daughter's now a junior in high school, but times have changed. But I fully understand what your point is to try and get across to us. You did a very good job.
Thank you.
Very good.
And Emma and I talked about maybe taking it a next step and doing some social research, and kind of looking at and talking to the students at Maple Shade, both observing what they do and do not eat, and the waste that maybe does take place, and also just asking them for their opinions on these types of questions, and kind of getting some data that way.
Some kind of survey.
Yeah. We talked about even doing that for this, but I thought we should focus on one step at a time.
Absolutely.
But that would be maybe a next step, is to do some research with our own student body and see where they're at.
So, do you feel that you have some friends that feel the same way that you do? And any of your friends that you brought with you tonight would feel the same way?
Yes.
All those say aye.
That actually may be a great segue. Mrs. Paul, our Director of Food Services, is here this evening, and she actually has a letter, which I think she's going to present to you. And while not reading the whole letter, one of the things that I thought was a really great opportunity in the letter, I'll let Ms. Paul tell you about it. She's got an invitation for you.
Well, I'll just come up now. Well, thank you very much, Emma. I didn't think I'd make it here. I'm glad I did. You did a wonderful job. And so, I did put a letter together, but I'll summarize it for you. We have a lot of different criteria and regulations we have to follow now from the government to make sure that everybody gets a well-balanced, rounded lunch. And I know there's been a lot of changes, real quick, throughout these past couple of years, and sometimes it's hard, but hopefully, you get a chance to try a lot of different foods and maybe learn to like some different foods. But in the meanwhile, I'd love to welcome an opportunity to sit with you and come up with a meal of your choice that meet all these new criteria and guidelines, and we can put it on the menu in March or April, and it would be Emma's lunch.
That's fantastic.
And we can have it for the whole school district. So, I'd love to sit with you, and maybe we'll connect with Mr. A., and you can go through all the guidelines with me, and we'll come up with something fun to put on the menu together.
I'd be happy to join, help you with that.
Yeah, so we'll, I'll be in touch with Mr. A., and we'll put a plan together, okay?
How's that sound?
So, thank you. And, you know, keep up. It's always good to make sure you voice your opinion, okay? We like to hear it.
Yeah.
You did an awesome job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Paul.
All right.
Stay right there. Does anyone else have any questions for Emma before?
I just want to compliment, as a former English teacher, this is a very powerful written letter, the word choice, the, I had to look dictionary for a couple of words. The transitions were excellent, the examples. It's a very powerful letter. I want to compliment Ms. A., you, and of course, Ms. Bedard. This is, as I say, as a former teacher, I'd give this an A+.
Wow.
All right, nice.
Nice.
You got any points, Seth?
And we just have a little something for you, Emma, before you go. Thank you.
What is this?
We know it takes a lot to come up in front of us. It's not easy to stand in front of here and read what you want to say, especially to when we're all adults and you're a student here at the schools. And what we like to do is recognize the student for coming up and speaking to us, and what we have is a little certificate of appreciation for coming and reading the letter. Look, your friends are surprised by it, too.
That is so great. Look at that, Emma.
So, you can have this and know that you've taken a big step, and we want to thank you for being here this evening. I know Mr. Smith would like to thank you also.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And you can take that home, you can show it off, and show your brother. And I hope that you have a great evening, and I know you're going to swim.
Mm-hmm.
I know that you're a big swimmer. Keep that up. Thanks again for coming to us, and Lori, thanks again.
Thank you.
And I know you always like to have different school lunch choices and some new ideas, so maybe this will get the gear rolling to come up with some new choices.
Definitely.
And look forward to your menu choice that you come up with.
See what happens when you?
Your friends have ideas going in their heads, right?
It's also good for kids to just see that when they take a step, it can lead somewhere else. Can go to another step.
And also not be afraid to come before us.
That's right. Well, that's part of why I wanted to do this with her, is to...
Yeah, we're very compassionate. We do care.
Most of you, anyway, right?
Yeah, Mr. Fuchero.
That was kind of, John turned it down there.
Come on, in the end, he's a softie.
He is, he is.
And we appreciate the time that you all came out this evening, too, to support Emma in leading her.
And thanks for getting us on the agenda and for helping me communicate back and forth and make this happen, so thanks.
Yeah, and we'll look forward to the update on food menu.
Yep.
Yeah? Have you ever been in a better coma?
Great.
You would do that.
Okay, well, good luck.
Thanks.
Thanks again. Good night, everyone.
And Deirdre, I'll send all of you an update on my invitation for this year's invention convention, like I did last year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night, thanks.
Yep, you'll have to, usually by the next day. You can also view it on YouTube. You'll have it on the YouTube.
You go to the Elcat Madison.
Way to the camera, right there.
Tracy, I'll just let you know how you're going to be doing.
Yeah, right. Definitely.
You have a great night. Thanks again, everyone.
Here we are. You're so funny.
Thanks.
And you were nervous about her.
Good luck. I hope you get out of here before 10:00.
We will.
Bye-bye.
Bye now. Two minutes.
That was very nice. Maybe Lori Paul will have a new menu option. I know one year at Mountain View, when we did our Wellness Night, she was there, and she actually took ideas from kids, and one of the students did come up with, I think it was like buffalo chicken salad or something like that.
Yeah.
And that became a choice on the menu. So, she likes getting these ideas, because then it helps her to know that this is something the kids will want to eat.
She wants to hear, too, because I was just telling her, one of my kids was raving about the new chicken, buffalo chicken. It's actually chicken. And, but she says, "All I got were complaints." And I says, "No, I says, "I think the kids really liked it." So, the kids like something, let her know, because, you know.
I'm curious, it'd be interesting to see what she comes up with.
Yeah. But I do have to say, on a side note, I know that they did try, like, clementines one year, and she said the hard part was with the younger kids, they couldn't open them themselves. So, here it was, you're trying to get all these kids getting through lunch, which is hard enough, and then everyone needs help peeling it. So, sometimes you don't realize something that seems like a great idea just doesn't work well when you try to produce it to the 200 or so kids at one time.
But I think Lori's sitting with Emma, they will conquer those.
Exactly. Okay. All right, so we can move on now with the rest of our meeting. We still have some minutes to approve, so we need to go back to 2.1. We have the approval of January 5th, 2015, regular session meeting minutes.
So moved.
All right, motion's been made, second and second. Any further discussion on that?
Yes.
Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that carries forward, 5-0. Just going to take a second to close the door. Thanks, Greg. I thought they would tie it down sooner or later. Having a party out there. Yeah. Thanks, Greg. All right, we have the next one. We have the approval of January 5th, 2015, executive session meeting minutes.
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries forward, 5-0. Lastly, we have 2.3, the approval of January 12th, 2015, regular session meeting minutes.
So moved.
Motion's made.
I'll second.
And seconded by Beth. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries forward, 5-0. Perfect. And moving on, we have committee and subcommittee communications. Beth, if you'd like to start, please.
Yes, I'm going to start with, again, ELEA. Their annual dinner is coming up on February 7th. It's $60 a person, and the support is huge. I'll just give you guys a little bit of an idea of what they are funding this year. This year, they are funding $4,000 for science texts at Meadowbrook. So, people have to understand that, you know, funds are tight, you go to appropriations for anything, go to capital for anything. We're asking for volunteers to give money to help our kids with textbooks. That is a wonderful thing. There's also multicultural books. There are some iPads and some of the keyboards to go with the iPads, which just opens a whole world of more applications for the students to use. There's some more Lego to complete the Lego Robotics Program at Maple Shade. They're doing it for the younger kids, the Lego We-dos. Math manipulatives, different kinds of intercom systems for the TV studio. Berchley's getting some new equipment, and my all-time favorite is the 3D printer coming to the high school.
Oh, nice.
So, that is huge. So, please, you know, even if you can't make it, you can always send a donation.
Any amount, too?
Yep, and it's $25,000 that they have given this year, and I think they're over $700,000 in the endowment, which is a huge jump up this past year.
That's great.
$700,000.
It's going good.
Yep.
I must have to say.
Okay.
First, Ms. Marcy-Boucher and I took a walk a week ago.
Oh, yeah, we did.
And we visited the art show that Ms. Dixon put on. It was tremendous what we saw together. I mean, just the creativity was outstanding.
Yep.
The ride, it was really wonderful. And I also had the pleasure of being with Ms. Maye and Mr. Smith, and judging the Mountain View bullying displays.
Bullying prevention.
Bullying prevention displays at each door, and that was a lot of fun, too.
Next meeting, we may have a quick video for you of the winners and all the doors.
Yeah, it's online, I think they posted it.
They did, yeah. And they got it to me today, and I apologize.
Each class?
Technological difficulty.
Each class decorated their door with an anti-bullying design, and we had to go and vote on them.
It's very stressful. I think they had a program, too, in the evening, and then they had, the Falcons came.
Yes.
They did something, too. So, it was a whole week worth of that.
Each day, they did something different.
And posters, the kids made posters for a while.
Right. Okay, Mr. Fonseca, could you have any?
Just real quick, I mentioned to most of you last week, I did attend a budget, Foundation Budget hearing in Northampton two weeks ago. This is commissioned by legislature. There's a series of six hearings across the state. They're going to look at reforming the Foundation Budget. I mean, there's no guarantees. People spoke very strongly of the shortcomings of the Foundation Budget as it is currently constructed and dealt out. There have been many changes since the 1990s, when the Foundation Budget was looked at the last time, so no guarantees anything's going to happen, because unfortunately, when you look at these things, there's dollar signs, heavy, big dollar signs attached to it. So, I will keep the committee updated as I get more information as this thing rolls up.
I just have a couple of things that I also, you know, that we had the anti-bullying contest at Mountain View, and I don't know how, Mr. Fuchero, you forgot that we got to enjoy the breakfast for the culinary arts.
Oh, that's right. That was good.
That's right, Beth Boucher and I attended one morning.
It was only last week.
I know, but... And it was, and they were under a lot of pressure, because we had the two-hour delay. Was it no school?
We had both.
We had both, and so it put them behind, but you would not have known that these students worked very hard, did not even show. They had a great breakfast that was presented, and hopefully, you'll be invited to the next one.
It was the last minute invitation, and unfortunately, I couldn't go.
Some of these things...
I know.
But you know, it was nice, because some community people were there.
Yes, I had a great time.
We had a few community people, and they were like, I think it really has them see that, okay, these kids aren't, you know, hoodlums or whatnot, that they're great kids, they're thoughtful, they're capable of wonderful things, so it was kind of...
That's why I did enjoy the people that I sat at the table with, and it was really nice, too. And most of them were the grandparents of the seniors in the class. That was really sweet.
Yeah.
I mean, these things are important. I mean, we just got through the senior project.
Yeah.
We bring in the community to help judge the senior projects, but it just shows everybody what's going on, the good things that are going on in this, not just this building, but the district, you know, across the district. These are things we have to continue to promote.
Yeah, it was great.
Ms. McLeod does a pretty incredible judgment.
Yeah, it was. It was very nice, too. Worked out very well. Okay. We're going to move on. This would be the opportunity for visitors to address the committee, but seeing none, there aren't.
They all left.
They all left. We're going to move on. We have our 5.2, the Western Mass Education Leaders Coalition.
Okay. In your packet, you have a document that looks like this, that is the final copy or final draft of the Western Mass Education Leaders Coalition Position Statement. And basically, it's a position taken by this group of people and possibly the school committees with whom they're associated, around three main points. The amount, pace, and cost of unfunded mandates, which often are topics of discussion at our school committee meetings. The validity, reliability, and implementation of the PARC exam. And then finally, the amount, frequency, and cost of standardized testing in and of itself. And so, as this group, and we discussed this a little bit last meeting, just how this group came into being, they've met now two times and have been able to agree and draft this statement. There will be a meeting on the 28th. This time will be hosted in Long Meadow, and hopefully, some follow-up steps will be identified. But if the committee is interested in supporting this, we could vote to endorse, and then Mrs. Mayeux and I would sign it, and I would also see if our union president would be interested in endorsing it as well, and seek out his signature. That was something that was actually added in the last round of emails, putting the final draft together.
Okay. All right, so I know we have briefly mentioned it, now that we've read the full letter. I'll open this up to any members if they'd like to share an opinion or have a comment that they'd like to make about the letter.
I was at the last meeting, and I can tell you that there were like seven districts there, and we were there for almost three hours, because this was done by all the districts speaking up in consensus. So, I mean, the number of Gordons and I's thoughts are in this, representing the school committee. So, I can tell you that it was a well-drafted, a lot of work, and I highly recommend we endorse it. I think since we were talking, we kind of pulled, and I think the goal is to send it to not only the local politicians, but the politicians across the state.
I have to say, I'm tickled pink about this, because I think it's about time, especially Western Mass, has a voice.
That was the point they made.
You're not bashing anybody, you're not saying you're not going to do it, you're not being disrespectful, you're just throwing your concerns out there, and it's together as a group, and I think it's about time, and I think it was very thoughtfully put together, and I'm happy to see it.
Thank you. I fully endorse this. I read it carefully, and a lot of the concerns that are shared in this document are also concerns that MAS C has had in the past. They speak for, you know, the voice of the state, but it doesn't hurt that this mirrors what MAS C, the resolutions that come out of the joint conference in every November, them lobbying with their legal counsel, Steve Finnegan, who acts as the lobbyist for MAS C, speaking to the unfunded mandate, speaking to everything that this document also speaks to. I have started to get documentation on the National Conference. The National Conference is going to start speaking about all of the unfunded mandates, because the unfunded mandates actually start, most of them start at the federal level and work their way down. Because the federal money, if feds don't have the money to, or won't fund them, they rely on the states to fund them. And then it comes to us saying, whoop, and they wash their hands of it. But I fully endorse this, and again, as I get more information, I will get the input, because there is, the only negative that I have, MAS C is, there are certain members of MAS C that are frustrated that they are not brought into this just to be a stakeholder, because it's not that they're against it, it's just that they're not a stakeholder. And I can understand their frustration, and I can understand why they weren't invited in. So, it's a duel, but there is widespread support for this.
Well, maybe the one thing is if MAS C was part of it, as much as I feel maybe, I know that they're a partner with us, it's a separate voice from them.
Right.
Which might be, I think...
Checks and balance.
Right. So, it's not like we're being led by them, but we are voicing our own opinion.
Well, no, that's fully understood. They just wanted to be a stakeholder in it, not to lead, not to take the lead. The lead is fine.
Yeah.
The group is fine. It's just, and that's the only negative, and it's not that big a deal, because they are behind it. The more voices we get with the same common theme, I don't know, maybe we'll lead to something.
And I think this is good, too, to help with any parents that may not understand everything that's going on. I think slowing the pace down of a lot of things really helps, because it is confusing when it's like, is it going to be MCAS? Is it going to be PARC? We have to choose. We don't have results. I think this will kind of give us something to stand on, to say, you know, we are looking at these things not only as an Eastlaw Meadow School Committee, but as a regional team also.
Do any members of the coalition not choose to use the PARC at all, 100% stay MCAS?
During the pilot, yeah, you had.
Long Meadow.
Long Meadow definitely did. And Agawam, I believe, are stating straight MCAS. I'm not sure entirely.
It's just the one sentence that kind of concerned me, although it's a soft sentence, is at the end of the first page, "The coalition is not convinced that the new exams questions are appropriate, constructed, and properly aligned with the new standards." Which, I know it's a soft statement, but if we're a district choosing to go with PARC, to say that we're not convinced that, and I know it says we're not fully convinced. Well, but why are we going with PARC then? If we're stating to the, that we're not convinced that it's an appropriate exam, I'm just, you know, I want to have some consistency.
No, I think, and you have other districts similar to us who are going to have PARC, grades three through eight. Basically, we would still like more time to look at the exam. But the reason being, if they stay on their timeline, which they have pretty consistently over the last five years, we're going to see PARC or exam like it in the next year or two, once they make a decision. And so, from a district standpoint, we felt, all right, we need to start looking at those type of questions to at least give our students the opportunity to do well on that exam as opposed to seeing it one time in the spring and not having seen anything like it up until that point.
And I do, however, like the following statement, that we'd like to see the results, although I doubt we will.
I was just going to say that, too.
I think that would help in the prior statement in terms of convincing us as districts that there is some validity to the test.
Right.
I don't know how you see the validity without results, so we may have to wait a year, and that's why we're going forward with it.
Will the governor get a copy of this?
Is there a timeframe for sending all this out?
If the school committee endorses it this evening, then we'll seek the signature from the president of the East Long Meadow Education Association, and then we try to get it out before the end of the month.
Does it, okay, so we're sending it out, or is each district sending it out?
Each district is sending their own out.
Is there a position paper coming from the coalition that's going to be sent?
Each one is sending out.
No, but is there just one that's a combined?
No. Basically, we're, if we choose to endorse this, this gets sent out by us, but it's the same draft.
Okay.
And are all the schools going to try to send out like within the same week so they get, it's a?
The idea is, hopefully, if people can get it on agendas before the end of January, that we're sending it out at the end of January.
I think that's the purpose of next week, the 20th, is to kind of pull that all together. Who's endorsed it? Who's still in process? When we're going to send it, essentially, the 28th.
All right. So I'll move that we endorse the Western Mass Education Leadership Coalition Position Statement dated December 3, 2014.
Okay. Motion's been made.
I'll second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay. And that carries forward, five to zero. Well, thank you very much. Hopefully, that this group will continue to move forward, and I look forward to the meeting next week. And by then, we'll know if other school districts have accepted this also by then.
We should. Yeah. A number of them have it on this week.
I do know that Lolo passed it last week.
Okay.
Okay. Great.
And we'll seek the signature and support of the ELEA, and then we'll have a copy for all of us to sign.
Perfect. I like it. Okay. So we're going to move on. We have 7.1, update on the VEX Robotics World Championship.
Okay. If you remember in the fall, we had a letter from Mr. Van Buren, who's the advisor to the robotics team, that outlined all of their trips between the fall into the early winter up until this March weekend, 7th and 8th, that he talks about in his letter. And so, given that we have certain parameters around long distance and, I guess, lengthy travel in terms of duration, he does want to meet the guidelines of those policies. However, the one thing that he can't give you is exact specifics until they have gone to that New England championship on the 7th and 8th. So what he's giving you here are the best estimates with the range of, you know, the absolute most that would be going to the least that could be going, depending on how they do. Usually, they do very well in those championships and New England championships.
They run into this every year, right? Don't they run into this issue every year?
They do.
Yeah, we had it last year.
Yeah.
I have a problem with the dates.
Okay.
It's during the school. And let me continue. We took away the eligibility policy for clubs. So we could possibly have the kids who's failing every subject miss three days of school for this. I have a problem with that.
Okay.
Because we had eligibility rule, then that would take care of it. So all I'm saying is, is that if they're going to miss two days of school, Mr. Smith, Mr. Viganis needs to validate with you that these students are all in good standing. I mean, Dr. Flynn, you're going to have to do that.
Okay.
I mean, the school committee has to accept that with me. I'm not doing what you put to it.
Am I supposed to come up with a plan of how they're going to keep up with?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Maybe work with the teachers to, instead of having, when he gets back, have the work.
Am I correct, though? I thought the vacation starts April 20th. I looked at my iPhone.
Yeah, I believe it does.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, look at that.
So I think a student would have to be in good standing in order to attend this trip.
I like.
Good academic standing.
Yeah, I agree with that. Are we being arbitrary, though, for that? Because do we not do that for other clubs? I'm just asking the question.
I don't know if we've come across it.
But there's two days of school. That's what we're bringing up. If one day, I would have.
Okay. No, I'm okay with that. That's reasonable.
No, I didn't, that's sometimes you have that insight of being.
We can't. I mean, I agree. I was going to mention if you didn't, Rich. Because I looked at the dates, and I'm going, there's three days of school.
Well, what if we just do it contingent upon him verifying that and that there's a plan of action for the students?
That's all. We have to see.
That's all you haven't seen.
That's fine, yeah.
Is that a reasonable request for it?
Absolutely. It's easily done in terms of checking if everyone's in good academic standing and putting together some type of plan so all can participate.
We can do that as well.
Okay. So we can just have a motion to?
A motion that we approve the VEX Robotics World Championship contingent upon how they do on March 7th and 8th in the New England championship, contingent that all students attending, students in good academic standing and have a plan of action to make up for what they're missing.
And just put in the dates that they're going.
The date that they're going is April 15th through the 18th in Louisville, Kentucky.
Okay. Motion's been made. I'll second. And seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay. Carries forward, five to zero. Do we have any other trips that they're supposed to come back to us on?
We had some that got canceled because of lack of participation, but we still may have one. Mrs. Faulkner, was it? Mrs. Sladey? Mrs. Faulkner, was she the one who still, trip that is still going out?
No, I think everybody, they didn't have enough kids, so.
In any of the trips?
Yeah, Mark Beal and Stephen Eckstein.
Okay.
There was one more.
So there's not, oh, okay.
I thought there was one.
I thought it was a year from now.
It was either two or three.
You might be right with this one. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We do have a middle school trip that will be on the next agenda around Washington, DC.
Oh, yeah.
And that had been mentioned or on an agenda in the fall with preliminary thoughts. And now, your final thoughts. Final agenda, final itinerary.
All right. Moving down, we have new business. We have 7.1, Maple Shade 4th Grade Field Trip to Lincoln Theater. I was going to say Lincoln Center, but they're not going there.
No, no.
Lincoln Theater, Hartford, Connecticut, on March 18.
So in your package, you have a document that has a cover letter from Mr. Forgette outlining the trip. It's the 4th grade. They've read the book, Charlotte's Web, and now they're going to see a theater production down in Hartford. On the second page, it gives you an idea. The team outlines the standards that the trip would connect with. And one of the things that, it's not in here, but I did get this information for you, is the 4th grade is roughly 107 students, similar to when they go to the science museum, you're going to have about 15 chaperones. And most of those chaperones are the teachers in Paris who support the 4th grade students.
Would they be using our buses?
They can use our buses if they can get out and back within the timeframe of when our buses are used for home to school and school to home.
It just says the busing price is to be determined, so.
Right. So what they would do is they would submit that, right, they would submit that, see if we can actually, depending on how many buses they need.
Okay.
All right. I move to accept the, to approve the 4th grade, the Maple Shade 4th Grade Field Trip to Lincoln Theater, Hartford, Connecticut on March 18, 2015.
Okay, motions. Sorry. Motions made.
Second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay. Carries forward, five to zero. Great, thank you. All right, moving on, 7.2. We have recommendation of revisions to policies, GCGR and IHAM.
Okay. In your package, you have the two policies that are mentioned on the agenda. The first one, GCGA-R, is actually the regulation, if you will. It outlines the procedures that we utilize around substitutes. One, setting a per diem for daily substitutes. And then, as you go down, it talks about substitutes who might be long-term substitutes. And the policy subcommittee had a pretty good discussion around this because we know that in past years, we've had different situations pop up where long-term subs have been needed at different schools and in different disciplines. And although I won't speak for the entire committee, we came to the conclusion that it may be something that we don't want to legislate with specific language in that as these things arise, one of the avenues that principals have had is that they can bring it to the attention of the school committee, and it can be discussed in terms of specifics. We had gone through, as a subcommittee, a number of different scenarios, if you will. But it's either never enough, you're not covering all possible scenarios, or it's too limiting in that you're only dealing with X subject or Y subject. So the revision that actually was made here is down around the note, where it talks about full-year temporary duration of need teachers. And it simplified that so that if you, if we are, as a district, we know that we will have a teacher, so this would be something that usually happens in the summer, it's going to be out for the entire school year, and we have a need for that person to step in for the entire school year, we would pay that person the bachelor's degree step-one rate in accordance with the Unit A contract. So that was, that whole area was somewhat simplified so that it's straightforward and easily understood. The only other change throughout is that we took out numbers such as 182 days, 183 days. And we just said the required days by contract. Because that sometimes changes. And actually, I think because it had changed, you had two separate numbers, two different numbers. One said 182, the other one said 184, as you read down the policy.
Is the participation in town insurance plan and the ability to join the teacher's retirement system, that's not a new, those aren't?
Those aren't new, yeah.
The only other thing is the number five, I think we missed the word, will not be be employed, the end of the number five?
Will not, yes. You're right. Thank you.
Small minor.
Yeah, I think they say what Greg's pointing in the second line on the note, there's a fine one person working in one position. It says on.
Should be, yeah, one position. Thank you.
Well, I mean, I have to ask. Let's say that teaches out the rest of the year, and there's 25 days left in the school year. Are we going to pay the bachelor's one?
No. You would, that's where C comes in. They have to be serving more than 30 days.
Okay, thank you.
So we didn't change that.
Thank you.
Yeah, it looks like there's a lot of going back to double check to see what the person.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So.
So I'll move that we approve policy, GCCA-R, substitute teacher information with the two minor changes that we mentioned.
Okay. Motion's been made.
I'll second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay. That carries forward, five to zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second policy in your packet is IHAM, and it deals with health education. This actually was revised so that it reflects what is currently going on in the district. When the policy was written or last revised, it dealt with a situation where we actually employed health teachers in the elementary schools. We no longer have that. It has been a while. And so we needed to revise to reflect what actually is happening in the district. Health continues to be a requirement based in Massachusetts general law, so it is something that we have to keep in the curriculum, and it currently is a high school graduation requirement.
So all you've added is what's involved.
Right.
Now, the one thing I did, and I do, and I'll just voice it, I think we need to offer health. I don't want anybody for one moment to think, I don't feel we need to offer health education. I think it should all be taught, the whole shebang by eighth grade because they need to know it all by eighth grade. That said, I do, I think at high school's too late at that point. But that said, I feel that we need to be respectful, and I talked with Mr. Smith about this, because I feel that families have a way of teaching their children certain aspects of health. And it's not necessarily a religious thing. And the only, you know, thing we have in here for children to be able to step out, in most cases, is religion when it comes to sex education or whatnot. Our other option is students can just sit out of the classroom on days where they're uncomfortable with the topic being taught for whatever reasons. I just want us to be thoughtful as we go through. You get into a guidance department, and you just get, no, no, that's it. And I don't think that, like, if you have a problem as a parent with a health education, I just want our guidance department to be open about it, and I want for, there not to be a door just stopped and said, this has got to happen. If it needs to come to us for special circumstances, I want us to at least be open to listen. Obviously, we have a policy here for a reason. We want our kids to get the education they need. But I also feel, and I've made this clear, that if there are special circumstances, we have to be respectful of a child getting pulled out multiple times out of a class, and maybe what the best route for that particular child would be special circumstances for any reason. It's okay. I've wasted, thank you.
And that would apply, just you're saying, even in sixth through eighth grade, not just high school.
Yeah. I mean, I just think that we need to be, I think that, you know, there are situations, and I know that our administration has tried to work, and they're working very well with families on certain things, but as we go through time, we don't know what's going to come out, what family situations are out there, and how they feel about certain things. And I, you know, the state says we have to teach it, but they don't tell us how we have to teach it and what grades we have to teach in it, just that it needs to be taught. And so, you know, just to be respectful of that as we, and not have a door slammed in a parent's face if they're, and it's frustration doesn't make it a good thing.
Okay.
And we did, I mean, we had a good discussion about this. So, you know, the four of us sat in a room, and we, you know, we threw all these scenarios out there. And as long as people realize the door's open and that we're not going to always say no, that we won't say no. We need to be compassionate.
Right. You have to be open.
Yeah. And especially in today's day, where, you know, the needs and the beliefs and everything is coming, this policy allows for that to happen. And as long as there's consistency and, and I'll use the word compassion, to deal with people as they come through the door.
And coming up with something like an alternative for?
Yeah. And it's not going to, I find that it probably isn't going to happen, but that it's there if they need it.
Right.
Okay. All right. So with that, we can just have a motion?
Make a motion to approve revisions to IHAM.
Okay. Motion's been made.
I'll second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay. That carries forward, five to zero. All right. We are moving down to our list. We have 7.3, our discussion of full-day kindergarten.
Okay. Since the last meeting, we've had a reminder article around full-day kindergarten and.
What was mentioned in the art form.
Right. And certainly, we've gotten people's curiosity.
Right.
And one of the things that we had talked about at our last meeting was that the kindergarten revolving account, excuse me, which was established when we opened up our new classrooms to help pay the bond, as well as if you're collecting tuition for full-day kindergarten, it would get that up and running, and it would have a place where the tuition would be kept. And then, in that revolving account, the money can only be used either toward the payment of that long-term bond, which helped us build the classrooms, or back toward the kindergarten program itself. The bond is actually coming due and will be finished this year, the end of this fiscal year. And this would be a good opportunity for us to transition to full-day kindergarten, which I think, when the classrooms were built, was the intent of the building committee and the school committee at the time. Am I correct in that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So basically, before us, what the committee has to decide is, one, is that the direction the committee wants to continue to go? And then, two, Ms. Solajars has broken out some of the numbers. Our thought was, since this revolving account has money in it that has to go back to the kindergarten program, that rather than pulling all three personnel that that revolving account supports out and putting them into the operational budget in one year, that we could do that slowly. And so, it's not as harsh and impact the operational budget on any one given year. I don't know if you want to pass.
I just want to make note that we don't have to vote on anything about it this evening. I just want to at least open up the discussion because I know, as I've gone over to Meadowbrook, the secretaries there have been fielding phone calls with, after the article's gone in, asking them, when will this go in? And I know this, it would be, it would be this September, so this next school year. Yeah, it would be that soon because that's, our bond is up. So they need to know, and I know kindergarten registration's coming up. One of the other concerns is the busing and getting that all situated also.
To that end, generally, our planning around kindergarten registration and busing and designating certain areas, like you, of the town as either AM or PM, all of that really starts late January, goes into February, and I'm sure that's, I'm sure that's what some of the calls have been about.
Right.
And certainly, that planning would not need to take place around transportation if we were going to full day kindergarten because you wouldn't have an AM and a PM situation at that point.
So I have handed out two separate documents. And the first one is the non-colorful one, is the one that really talks about how we've been funding full day kindergarten for this year, prior years this year, and projected for next year. So at the top of that sheet, you will see what the cost of providing the kindergarten program has been for this year. And there's really three sources that we've been using to fund the kindergarten program. One is our budget, one is our revolving tuition account, and the other is a full day kindergarten grant that we've been receiving that pays for several paraprofessionals because we do have a full-time paraprofessional in every kindergarten classroom. So as you can see, and also part of that cost for this year was $100,000 that went towards the payment of the modular. As, if you look at the comparison between the FY15 and FY16, what you really see is that, you know, the $100,000 is gone, but, you know, basically the salaries will increase slightly every year, you know, based on contracts. We do, will need to be putting supplies probably in the revolving account or some more supplies. There's also some new regulations that will be happening around kindergarten called MKEA, which in the future we will need to be funding as well. So what the bottom portion is, is just an example of how that might be phased in to, you know, close down that account eventually and phase it, you know, phase that all in. It could be done differently than this. And if you look at that, we just start with the carry forward, the known number that was in that account at the end of June last year was $374,872. And then we take the adjustment for the modular payment this year. And then I just have broken down what I knew at the time when I did this, which was the last deposit that was recorded in the munis account and what we've estimated for the rest of the year, expenses for the rest of the year, and projecting a balance at the end of this fiscal year of $325,352. Again, that's just a projection, you know, but it's halfway through the year almost, so I feel pretty good about that. And then, so for next year, what I've said, and what I budgeted for currently in the FY16 budget is two teachers to be, continue to be paid out of this fund. And we had one para that's still being paid out of this fund, but we also included that one para could be paid out of the supplemental budget next year if we wanted to move that over. So I kind of just went down through here. What I did here was reduce each year, one teacher back into the budget, and also added some costs for the MKEA and other related costs, like $5,000 from there. The para is still, not sure which fund we're taking that out of. And then closing, basically closing it out at the end of 2018. You could do this different, you could, you know, phase it in half a teacher a year, keep it going a little bit longer, depending on the financial needs of, you know, what's going on with budgets.
Is the MKEA going to happen regardless of whether or not we have full day or half day?
I believe it is.
So that's a definite anyway.
Yeah, the MKEA is, it is, it's.
I know you mentioned, I can't remember.
Right, it's, it's an assessment system for kindergarten. It's both accreditation, but also an assessment system. Given that we were somewhat of an early adopter, I believe we're still trying to do work sampling. Other districts who may not have gotten in as an early adopter, it's, it's an assessment that the students have to go through.
But it's not a direct cost because we're going full day? So in fairness to.
No, it was going to happen.
It would happen anyway. Good to know that.
It's going to be, it's one of those unfunded mandates.
That hopefully our letter will have some sort of impact. Does that almost pay for a para?
And I really don't know what the cost is going to be. I just put that in there as a kind of a place.
Will the full day kindergarten grants still be available going forward or?
Well, as far as we know, I mean, every year, if it's funded through the legislature.
Yeah, but just because we're going to change the way we do things, we're not going to lose eligibility for that grant?
No, I believe that that's true, we will not. And although we just received something from Jesse this weekend, actually, it came in an email about some new requirements for the grant that they're wanting districts to look at more than salary, you know, so we may have to adjust our grant next year to pay, you know, some, something else.
Like the MKEA? I was just going to say.
It could be a supply, basically they want to see that you're.
Not just playing case.
You're using it to increase, and this is sadly, I'm saying this about kindergarten program, but the rigor of your program. It's, yeah, it's putting a teeth in the curriculum.
Because with the, you know.
Putting teeth in that.
With the 52.7, it will help to do something.
Oh, yes.
That we won't have to account for, that's why I asked the question.
So I, so I make sure that I understand this sheet. The FY projected balance is 325, 352, correct?
Correct.
So if we attain the paraprofessional, 13088, and we go into projected FY16, 178629 plus 13088. Right, thank you, got it, thank you very much.
What about chapter 70 period?
Okay, so, so the other handout.
Colorful one, colorful one.
The colorful. Because it's a lot of numbers. And I will tell you that the chapter 70 formula is extremely complicated. And so I will absolutely tell you I am nowhere's near an expert on it at all. But I did attend a workshop at my annual institute last year in May. And Roger Hatch from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, who is an expert on the chapter 70 foundation, put on this presentation on how to calculate what the impact on chapter 70 would be when you institute a full day kindergarten program. So what you have on the top sheet is the FY15 actual chapter 70 summary. And if you look at, on the right-hand side of this where you see, I guess what color is that? It's kind of a reddish moth, okay? Chapter 78, that you, and you'll probably remember that our chapter 78 this year increased by $67,000. So our current FY15, chapter 78 was $9,901,624. So if you turn the page, there's a lot of spreadsheets that are behind this that feed into these charts. So with the guidance of that presentation last, last year, I was able to go in and do a simulation of what our chapter 70 would have been for FY15 had we implemented full day kindergarten last year. So when you implement the full day kindergarten, the effect on chapter 70 is until the following fiscal year, so. And if you look, it's really on the right, again, the important numbers, the, in the yellow. So what I have done is, and the FY15 actual, and we go down to the moth, and you'll see that in that actual number is the $9,901 that we just talked about. They, if we had instituted the full day, the new number would have been $10,61,344, $159,270 increase.
So two teachers.
It's a teacher. Or a teacher. Is it almost, my, is it 65?
No, after the 13.
And after this stage, 13, yeah.
And so then in future years, the long-term impact would be, so currently within the formula, all of those, all of our kindergarten students right now are counted as .5 students. So this change increases them to full-time students. So now that really impacts, this is what you're seeing in the first year of that impact. So in the following years, the funding is that each student would be, each kindergarten student would be $1,406 more than they would have been if they were still .5. Now, you're not going to see a big jump like this every year, but you're going to remain at the higher level of those kindergarten students being funded as full-time versus .5 students.
Actually, if we have 110 students, we realize the 159,000 every year, right? We'll realize.
If you were to continue to add them.
We don't have to add them every year, we'll realize the same number.
Yes.
So if we're going to count them as full day, if nothing else changes, that number won't change.
Correct.
Which pays for the two teachers.
The funding increases or decreases, you know, who knows? But this is just a, you know, one, a snapshot as to what it would have, have been.
What, what's the annual revenue from the tuition, do you know, Terry, currently?
Let's see, it probably is about, well, in the last couple of years it increased because we had a real increase, so I want to say about $300,000 maybe.
Oh, is that much?
I don't think it's.
How many students?
170, well, but we have a lot of free.
Being reduced.
And, you know, so that we have to account for.
We have a lot of, one of the headaches that would go away with this is that there's a lot of communication around collection.
Right, yes.
It's both from the school, from our office, from our attorney's office. And providing this benefit would end that piece, but it would also be something that benefits the entire town.
I mean, and I think the other piece is now that most families are, you know, when we first started out, you know, we had a few full day kindergarten. And now we only have two small.
One AM section and one PM section.
A half-day.
Now.
I mean, it's clear from a financial point of view that we benefit as a system. Better education for the students, all students, and better financially. But what process do we have to follow? Does this say, can we as a school make a, you don't have a decision to do this? Or do we have to confer another time forward?
It's our decision.
It's your decision. Regardless, I think what Ms. Olajars was doing is that the way we have to reflect it in what we provide the town is that it is a change in programming. And so that's where the para is represented, that's coming out of the revolving account, is represented in the supplemental section.
Well, I think that's the safe way to implement it though, based on the numbers. If we're able to implement that para, which is only $13,000 this year, this year now in the budget going forward, then based on the numbers, the rest of it will take care of itself. And it'll take a year, but we have some cushion with the, with the budget. And the other side of it is the danger in going forward with charging tuition with no longer having to pay the bond. I mean, there's some certain danger in perception of parents on, well, what are you charging us for?
I always thought there was an understanding that once the bond was paid off, this would get looked at again. Because my dog was actually the first class that went in there.
They moved him in.
They moved him in. And, you know, we participated in it because there's obvious benefits. But my understanding at the time was, in the 10 years when the bond was paid off, that it would be looked at and the tuition would go away.
The 159, now, that isn't taken into account here. Right? So the chapter 70 isn't, so you could make this, keep the money in the revolving fund a little bit longer if you were able to pay the teacher.
Well, the chapter 70 goes to the town.
Oh, it goes to the town, oh, all right. I forget about that. But I should know that.
But part of that, though, going to the town is, is having that discussion that the initial chapter 70 is directly correlated to the increase in kindergarten. I think we make that case right away.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because this is, this amount is increasing specifically because we're going to full day kindergarten. And because of that, we're going, or that helps in our decision. And that goes right out if we decide to do it. And to your point about getting other departments on board, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have the, to at least send some sort of correspondence to the Board of Selectmen, that this is our plan and this is why this is part of plan. Do they understand our plan and the rationale?
And this is how we're moving it out.
The additional chapter 70 money next year, you know, including the town accountant appropriations. I think we have that conversation with appropriations. I think we make our case to appropriations that including the para this year is fiscally responsible because then we, we are projecting that the rest of it will take care of itself. So really, there's no further impact to our town budget if the projections on chapter money, chapter 70 money continue the way we're projecting.
But if they don't, so the revolving account is a.
Right, but we'll have to wean off of that because we don't have it anymore. So, but in, in terms of receivables and payables, it's, this is going to, it's going to wash other than $13,000. So why would we, how would we not do it? How, how do we justify not doing?
Right. I just want to make the statement so it's on air. By doing this, then there's no option for half-day. It becomes all full day for every kindergartner entering it.
It's free education.
And I think it's great because it's really going to build up to that first grade curriculum. I don't want to say rigor. But I think it really, I feel like, you know, that first grade, really the work has, you know, it has become a little bit more challenging for some students. And, you know, what I notice is for some of our friends who did have to take kindergarten, they're coming into first grade, and that's their first experience of a full day. And then on top of the work. So I really feel like having a full day kindergarten really will transition the kids in smoothly.
I agree with you, but I also look at the social development of the kids.
Yep, all of them.
And, you know, it's the big picture. It's not just, you know, we're going to start this. There is, there's definite benefits. And it's hard, you know, it's hardcore data benefits that we're going to, we're going to, we're going to see.
I miss it though, my, my kid's now first grade, so.
Yeah, I have to say, I do too. I personally, and I am all for full day kindergarten. I personally would have been, if I was a mother sitting here right now with my, my little four going on, a five-year-old, and I'm listening to someone again, don't do full day. I would be like, don't do full day, because I was one of those crazy mothers. It'll be all right, I'm sorry, but, you know, it is, I liked half-day. My kids were half-day, they were young kids, they couldn't do a full day. But I also feel that they were, they had activities that they ended up going to at the other half of the day anyway. So they might as well have been in school full day.
I'm, I'm an older parent now, but I mean, isn't this better for day here?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. There's a couple of that, you know, you have to stay at home, it's okay. The one thing I just wanted to check is, there's enough, there is a classroom sitting there for that extra teacher.
I asked a question.
There's not an extra teacher though, so we're talking the same.
No, same numbers, it's all the same number of classes. Because that only one classroom that has a morning.
Oh, it's only the one now.
That has a morning and an afternoon.
Yeah, but that afternoon group is going to need another teacher and another classroom.
They're small, they're like eight or nine kids.
So they'll just.
For 12, okay, yeah.
Yeah, but it's divided amongst the other sections.
And plus our numbers have been steady, right? What do you project for kindergarten?
We've been averaging right around 162 the last three years. It has gone down from my first two years where it was around 180 something.
Well, we had that one year when it went way up. I think it was your first year?
Yeah.
Possibly.
And it went way up.
And then we added a section.
We had to add a section, yeah.
So the teacher's still in place. So what are the numbers now on average in the full days?
In the full day, they're 20.
And there's a para in each room.
Right. And that, if our numbers stay consistent, it's not going to change much. You know, your average may go to 20.3, which makes it, which makes one section out of maybe 21 students.
All right, okay, that's good. All right, so we will bring this back on. Everyone can have a little bit of time to look at the numbers, absorb it.
But in fairness, we should, maybe the next, can we bring it up at the next meeting?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we'll bring, just let it sit for the next, and then have it on the next one, and then we'll have something for.
Move on February 2nd, like we were saying?
Yeah, we'll bring it back to vote, we'll bring it back to vote. This way everyone can take a look at the numbers a little bit closer.
I mean, I'll just throw this out there. We, to your point, Greg, we're meeting with appropriations.
February 24th.
And in February, we could, at the end of that conversation, after we get through our budget, we can bring this up. So that's the way we're going to go.
Certainly, I mean, it's your decision. You would help us organize this if the decision is made prior to the.
Well, no, no, but I'm just saying, we'll make the decision prior, but.
I think it has to.
Get the conversation out there.
Yeah, only just to, exactly, just to put an end to any rumors and.
Right, right, no, no, I'm not, I'm not saying delay the vote. I'm just saying how we proceed, how we go forward.
So Meadowbrook can tell people to watch on February 2nd, a faded breath.
Well, we're not live, so.
The day after.
The day after.
Yeah.
Third, okay. Okay, so with that, we also want to just thank our LCAT volunteer tonight, Jamie Brook. Am I getting your last name right?
Yeah.
Brook, thank you very much for your time this evening, we really appreciate it. We don't have Jack Whitehan here, so with that, we just need a motion to adjourn.
So I'll move.
Motion made?
Second.
And seconded, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed nay. Carries forward five zero. Have a great night, everyone, thank you for being here.
We're on at 9 o'clock, right?